Innocent Westside kids. The un-American concepts were yoga, meditation, Tai Chi. And now there's a yoga shop almost as frequently as Starbucks. But I was a couple of gen- I was a generation ahead of my time left public education. In that school, as the youngsters got better and-
Thirty seconds.
We got involved in teaching parents. So we were- middle school is a point that I would like to bring to Oxnard because that is a transition during which we lose perhaps seventy percent of the kids who become susceptible to all kinds of predators if they have not learned skills for self-reliance.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Any other speakers, Madam Clark?
Mayor Serkosa, there's no additional speakers virtually or in person. Thank you.
Thank you so- and I'm gonna have our council make some comments, but I'd like to share a couple of comments before I pass on to your council members. I want to thank Veronica Tericas. Veronica, where are you? Thank you for excellent presentation. All the professors, the teachers, the staff, and also the youth that spoke today. It's really, uh, really great to hear your presentations. And just a couple of things that I heard today. It was that our youth need and require guidance. They need training, networking, to make a better future for themselves and their families. We need to set up efforts to facilitate upwards mobility, economic mobility, for our Oxnard youth, to increase their well-being and to ensure that they themselves and the city thrive. Additionally, you know, I've just took a couple of two, three items here that I think is really important. Local government, our community, our schools, our leaders can address the root causes of inequality and devise some solutions for Oxnard residents to coordinate and to counteract social inequalities that can be better- we can be better models ourselves for the large immigrant community and other working-class populations here in Oxnard. I think one of the things that was mentioned too, and I don't want to thank our city manager for working for the employee pipeline. One of the things we're working with our chambers, I see Nancy here, and our Chamber of Commerce says, and our local businesses, where we're training some of the employees that they want to get ahead. They want to become plumbers, electricians, and so forth. And of course, I also want to thank our city manager. We many, many times, you know, we- I hear that our city manager doesn't do X, doesn't do Y, but we have a city manager that's then sit behind the desk. He's out there talking to neighborhoods, talking to individuals, talking to our colleges to make sure that, that Oxnard is heard, which, and he's under the direction of the city council and myself. So I thank everybody for excellent presentation. And again, Veronica, you did a very, very good job. Thank you on my behalf. Mayor Protam, you want to share a couple of words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the group for the presentation and all the work that you've done. I am- I tend not to show a lot of emotion one way or the other. I just sit up here kind of stone-faced. But I'll have to tell you that you took me down a trip down memory lane, and it was a rather painful trip for me. My grandmother was born in Chihuahua, Mexico, and she came to the United States in the very early nineteen hundreds, about nineteen ten. Met my grandfather, and she had three daughters, one of which was my mother. And they all grew up, the daughters all grew up in the East LA. That's where my grandmother and grandfather lived. And I never knew much about her, other than, you know, I would go see her. I'd spend time with her. I had cousins in the East LA. I loved the area, but never knew much about the family until after my grandmother passed away, and I started doing genealogical research. And in the interim, my mother was faced with some health challenges. She didn't seek a lot of medical help or medical attention. She had minimal college, maybe one year of community college, worked not terrible jobs, but not great jobs. And she and my dad struggled their whole time trying to, you know, provide a home, provide a living for me and the family. And it was because of both of them that they encouraged me to, to go to college and do better on the educational side. And I was able to do that thanks to their, their love and their guidance. You know, unfortunately, my mother came down with cancer and it was metastatic, and she died at the age of forty-nine, which is way too young a time to be dying. And I think it's probably because she just didn't seek out medical care. That just was not part of her regimen. So I saw a lot of similarities between this study and part of my family. My grandmother, I don't think she had any formal education at all, but just a wonderful woman, loved her, you know, forever. And so I think those were my incentives to, to do better for myself. And I, I sit back now and look at the costs of college and education and housing, and I wonder how young people are able to even survive in this economic climate. I was fortunate enough to be able to go to college. I couldn't afford UCLA. I went to Cal State Long Beach. I worked full-time at night. I went to school full-time during the day, and I was young enough where I only needed four hours of sleep and I could, I could get through, but it was a challenge. But it was the most wonderful time of my youth growing up. And so this whole study and your description of, you know, our cultural differences and similarities really hit a nerve for me. So I thank you so very, very much. And ultimately, most of the people that are seated in here, if not all of you, you're our future. You're the ones who are gonna step up and start doing the work that some of us have been doing for a while. I'm old enough now where I should probably start to consider slowing down a little bit, but I don't have the sense to do so at this point, but I'm gonna keep going. But someone's gonna have to step up and do this and carry this community forward and this state forward and this country forward. And that's gonna be you. And so I really think that we do need to look at ways that our educational system can better serve you as our youth, you as our middle-aged adults, whoever needs it. And I would agree that Oxnard College being, serving the largest community in the county of Ventura, and yet tends to be the smallest college in the community college district, we need to give it some more attention. And I think people should be able to attend college here in their local community instead of having to go to Ventura or Moore Park. I had to go to Ventura College because the curriculum I wanted to follow wasn't offered here at Oxnard. And Oxnard College is a ten-minute drive from me. Ventura was about twenty-five-minute drive. So it just seems disparate at best, and I don't like that. I think we should be all equal, so. Thank you for all your efforts. Thank you for the, the study and the results. They were phenomenal. And like I said, it did take me down a bit of a challenge path, but I really appreciate you allowing me to interact with you and join with you and experience this. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. So we'll go with Councilman Perello then, Valenzuela, and then come back to this thing. Councilman Perello?
Dr. Solis, thank you very much for your presentation and for the people that worked with you. The entire hard copy that we were given before the presentation some time ago, reading it, was extremely eye-opening. The thing that I find, and I'm co-tailing, I'm piggybacking on what's been said, the discrepancies in the community college system are atrocious, but I want to give credit to the attorney that spoke. I know a tremendous amount of people, and I want to also give a tremendous amount of credit for Dr. Jajana for getting up and speaking. A tremendous amount of people leave this community to take their kids to school somewhere else, or they drive them some other school. The biggest thank you that I have is for the rest of this council, the other six individuals that are up here. Because when our city manager suggested doing something like this, nobody really challenged him. The city manager's idea is to do something to better the community, to bring the people up, that age group, eighteen to thirty-five. What's gonna happen? We're not gonna be up here forever. We're not gonna live forever. You guys are gonna be stuck with whatever's left, and if we don't do something to make it better, that'll say a lot about us. But the credit goes to the management of the city and the forethinking. I got involved in the city of Oxnard in nineteen ninety-eight. Up to that time, when our city manager brought to our council this suggestion, I had never heard that from anybody, higher or lower than the highest elected official come out of here or the lowest citizen. I'd never heard these suggestions come up, but I believe every one of us knew that there were discrepancies. And to this credit of Mr. Nguyen, this is his suggestion. I want also to tell you, it takes a lot to come up to the public podium and speak. It's a bridge I had to learn to cross, but it's been a long time since I've seen this room filled up and people standing at the back looking for a place to sit. The involvement in local government's a big deal, whether it's you or your parents or your brothers and sisters or your next-door neighbor, makes a big deal. If you don't get involved and you don't vote, there's a phrase, "You get what you deserve. Sometimes it's not good." I hope you stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Valenzuela?
First, I wanted to say thank you very much to Professor Tericas, your peers, the students, and the community members who brought this together, but also thank you for everyone who came tonight. I wish all of our council meetings were, our council chambers were filled like this every meeting. But going on this right here, I want to state with a briefcase that, you know, the city of Oxnard doesn't have control over the school districts or the community college district when it comes to this concern. However, I think we're very happy to move forward on any partnerships or any cooperation in the future, especially as, you know, with this study, we can move forward now with seeking some philanthropic, philanthropic private foundation funding to, in order to fill these gaps for our local residents. And, you know, I know our school districts are under stress right now while the state of California is cutting their budget, you know, overall, so looking forward to seeing how we can fill these gaps. And on the other part of this, that our school districts do have well-trained staff and they do work tirelessly to develop our youth. You know, they're, our youth are in school seven to eight hours, but, you know, they're also out of school for seven to eight hours. Education isn't only tied to the classroom. As we showed, as is showed in the study, there's also the need for, you know, the lack of food security and housing security for our youth, for them to succeed in school. Back in twenty thirteen, I was finishing my term as the student trustee for the Ventura County Community College District for Moore Park, Oxnard, and Ventura College. I remember I went up to the Moore Park College president at the time, Pam Ettinger, and I was telling her, "Hey, congratulations on the number of students that were transferring to UC." And I remember, I'm paraphrasing what she responded with, but she was like, "Thanks, but it's really due to the community that surrounds Moore Park College." And, you know, it took me a while to realize, oh, she meant it's because of the socioeconomic status of this community versus Oxnard or Ventura. So I remember this, like, long history about it. And so, you know, and when I was a student at Ventura College, I would commute via the bus from Oxnard to VC, and there were times where I struggled with, do I pay for food or do I pay for transportation home, where I'm at school from eight AM in the morning till nine fifty PM when my last class lets out? And so I'm actually very happy to see that Ventura College, or sorry, any community college student can now get free public transportation. So we're working on that right now. But I guess some of the questions I have on here regarding this is, you know, is it also possible to disaggregate this data between zip codes in Oxnard? Because I know, especially here in, for those in South Oxnard, nine thirty, thirty-three much different from nine thirty, thirty-five or nine thirty, thirty-six. And I think that's important to say because especially from the conversations I've had with members of the community in South Oxnard, that even between high schools, there is a big difference in socioeconomic status in our school district. And then also, I think, some of the things that we mentioned here that I would look forward to, how we can mend some of these gaps, is do we have to look into expanding our after-school program so that way parents can attend education courses so they can get training? Or, you know, what are we gonna do with the county to provide this adult care? So, you know, family members that take care for older family members or family members with disabilities, so they can go get education or workforce development training? But yeah, I was, but thank you very much for doing this study and looking forward to the pathways for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Basuwa?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to express my appreciation to Dr. Tericas, Professor Ortiz, and Professor Chavaria. I hope I didn't miss those three that took on the leadership role of putting this together, and to all the students that took part of this. It was very, it's very wonderful to see. The challenges that our youth faces, our young adults faces is nothing, we didn't hear anything that if you're a community member in Oxnard, we didn't learn anything shocking. I will say that when I received a copy of the report, I told our city manager, "I don't like what's in this report." And he said, "Okay." And it, it was reality, right? We, we live in it, but now we have it on a piece of paper. And it really goes and says that we live in a community that faces many, many, many challenges. And one thing, though, that I am very, very proud of right now is the amount of leaders that are in this room right now. And every single one of you play a crucial role in Oxnard. And I think the most crucial role that we have is the students that are sitting in the front row, the ones that are currently getting their education. I would like to see all you come back and live in Oxnard and give back. What happens is, a lot of the times, our students come from Oxnard. We have so much talent in Oxnard, but they move away. I would love to see you all back here. I have three kids, all, two in college, one graduated, and I want them to see the world. I encourage them to see the world. One of them lives far away, but my goal as a mom is, is I always tell them, "Don't you ever forget where your roots are, where your foundations are. I gave you wings to fly, but make sure that you know where your journey home is. And Oxnard will always be your home." So I hope that you go out to the world and you get an education, you see the world, but please don't forget where you come from and always remember to give back. I'm excited to see what is next for us here. This starts a conversation. We're not really taking any direction right now, but we have all the partners in the room that are very critical, from the elementary to our Oxnard Union School District to our colleges. You all play a critical role in shaping the future of Oxnard, and I look forward to continuing that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Madrigán?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. First, as everyone's kind of stated, I want to thank Dr. Tericas. It was a pleasure meeting you about eighteen months ago and the joyful and aspect of it. And I knew from that moment we had that conversation that your heart was in the right place and you genuinely cared, not only to do the research, but you cared for the well-being of the residents of Oxnard, and that went a long way. Of course, I'd thank the city manager for doing this. It's great. I want to thank Jose Negrete, who couldn't be here today. He's out in Geneva as we speak, so I know he would love to be here, but he has to do more schooling out over there, so. And I'm sure he's probably, it's four, five in the morning, and I'm sure he's watching on YouTube as we speak. But before anyone else, I actually want to thank Dr. Kobian. Dr. Kobian has helped many students here at Oxnard College, and he's helped many students who are about my age when they were high school kids with the Upper Bound Program. And he got a lot of those, a lot of Oxnard kids to be that first-generation college grads with the work he did with them when they were fourteen, fifteen years old, so thank you for that. What this study tells us, you know, lack of healthcare, lack of high-paying jobs, lack of basic needs in our community. And weirdly enough, the last, most important part that wasn't mentioned, but the lack of hope for our youth, serving, living here my entire life, the aspect of a simple conversation, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" And the blank face on a student saying, "I have no idea." And some of them are going to graduate in six, seven months. That is a difficult task. And then, you know, I'll, I'll randomly do this, I'll randomly do that, but have no idea how to get there. That part is very, very difficult because, as we all know, it's, you know, it's a tough world out there. And the aspect of what's ahead, you know, is very, very difficult. Back to what Councilwoman Basuwa was saying, the great thing, though, about this study is, if anything else, one, it made this a topic, but two, it brought everyone to this room on this day. And hopefully, you know, we're, this is the, the first part, theory part, when now we get to the implementation aspect of this. And by us being in this room, the most important thing that we can do is network. And obviously, yes, I understand, everyone, you know, we collaborate with everyone here, you know, the city is not necessarily involved directly with education, that's the school's job. We do have five school districts within city limits, so, you know, how do we get that to work? And, you know, this isn't just fall on the high schools and the community colleges, but, you know, it does begin with the elementary school districts at this level. And, you know, we could be condescending, we could mean well, but realistically speaking, you know, we all want the betterment of our youth. And how do we fix the transfer rates? What can we do? Are we gonna get together to do this? You know, obviously, that's the community college's job, but at the same time, we need to genuinely collaborate with this and with local universities within our county and, you know, to help out these students in need. And yes, I understand, you know, all of us are busy. We all have our jobs, we all have things that we take care of, but we do need to save that time. It just cannot be this one great meeting, everyone leaves this room very optimistic about the future, and then eighteen months from now, we talk about that great moment eighteen months ago and nothing that happened ever since. This cannot be that moment. We need to, obviously, not only get something from today, but move something forward. And, you know, the Oxnard employee pipeline is an example of things that can't happen. It's, you know, it's great, but we're gonna require more help. You know, the city's not gonna be able to do it by itself, the school district's not gonna be able to do it by themselves, the college is not gonna be able to do it by themselves. We require help. We need to reach out, and our biggest and best way to do this is through networking. Sure, most people here grew up here in Oxnard. I'm sure most of us went through the public school system here, and we have wonderful stories to tell. And the hard part, as was stated, is some of us have stayed here locally, a lot of us have left. How do we give back? It can't be the, "Well, I live in this particular neighborhood, and your advice to that particular kid is do what you need to do and get out of here." The advice should be do what you need to do, get educated, and then give back to the community that gave to you. And that's something that we need to push. I understand, you know, things happen. We sometimes move, but always remember where we came from, and if we can't be here, you know, something simple as giving back. Was that always monetary? No. It means, you know, giving time and effort to this community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tron?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Dr. Tericas for the amazing work and your team, amazing leaders, and all the PhDs who were involved in this. It's not lost on me that it, the document we have and the presentation we saw tonight represents hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of individual and collective hours of work and research and really putting this together for the benefit of this community. So thank you very much. And I also want to thank all of the leaders in our, of our community who are here tonight. See a lot of familiar faces, and I am, this is like the All-Stars or the Avengers, like everybody's all in one room at one time. Like, this is, this is amazing to see. It gives me a really warm feeling. I'll talk about that in a moment. But I want to start with a couple reflections, since we have so many leaders in the room and so many members of our community who are watching this now and will watch this after its recording. I want to start with a reflection on, think of, as a young adult or even in your teen years, the best team you've ever been on, whether it was a sports team or a club or a job that you had, but the best teams that you've ever been on, where you just felt like you meshed well, you were a well-oiled machine, everybody worked well together, even when there were differences, those differences are handled with success, right? So those best teams, you may, in reflecting on that, realize that there was no one person that made that team a success. It's how you all worked together as a collective unit, and all of you strive towards collective success. And I think, looking at what we have here in front of us, this community can be a high-functioning community, much in the way that high-functioning teams and high-functioning organizations work and have demonstrated success. And in this case, we have the city, the county, the school districts, the community, the nonprofit sector, the private sector, all of us working together to go towards this common goal of better serving our community or the best way we can serve our community, especially young people who are highlighted tonight. And so I wanted to start with that, and, you know, I am sure my colleagues could probably start reciting these things that I talk about whenever we talk about young people, but the thing that always kind of comes back to me is resiliency theory and a couple of components that stick with that. And think about it in three different pillars. You have caring relationships, meaningful, meaningful opportunities, and high expectations. And if a young person has those three things from an adult or ideally multiple adults in their life, caring relationships, meaningful opportunities, and high expectations, that young person is going to have greater resiliency and be, have a higher likelihood of overcoming challenges that face them throughout their lives. And especially if they already have these other risk factors that come into play, such as living in a challenged community, come from a challenged family, challenged background, or any number of things that face so many young people, especially in communities like Oxnard. And so all of the adults in their life, if they're providing at least a couple of those things, but ideally all three of those things, we are building the resiliency in our young people, whether we know it or not. And having said that, caring relationships, meaningful opportunities, and high expectations, as another reflection, I'll ask everybody to think about an adult in your life, in your formative years, who provided any or all of those things to you, and how that, having that person in your life has guided you to where you are today in 2024. You may be that person for a young person today, or all of us collectively could be that force for the young people who greatly need that in their lives, especially if they feel there isn't any adult who's providing that for them, or they don't know who that is. So I also was so humbled to hear a number of speakers share how they saw themselves reflected in the information that was presented, because when I went through the, through the draft report, it was the same thing for me. Just reading through it and seeing the number of challenges that our young people face, and I believe Mr. Chavez mentioned, these are generational challenges that our parents faced and our grandparents faced and their parents faced, and how is it that we have this cyclical, ongoing set of challenges that we just can't break out of as a community, regardless of the year, regardless of the decade, regardless of the generation? First thing is acknowledging that it's a thing and acknowledging that it's something that we haven't been able to address either as siloed entities or as individuals in our work. And that's where the collective work comes in, that we need to figure out, how do we all work together to break this in the, in the biggest way with the most impact, positive impact possible? And I mean, I, I always say with, with my individual story, that my story is not unique to young people in the city of Oxnard, you know, not having my biological father around, having challenged family circumstances, having a number of things that, that I had faced and that my siblings and cousins and my family had faced. faced and that my siblings and cousins and my family had faced. Uh, I, um, how did I overcome those? Well, I have to thank Oxnard College as an institution, because after high school, when I always say, you need two hundred and thirty credits to graduate high school, I barely got them, but I got two hundred and thirty credits. But then it's like, well, now what? Now what do I do? Do I go to work? Do I go to school? I don't know. I didn't have grades to go to a four-year university, and I didn't do SATs, I didn't do any of that, because I didn't have that role modeled for me, nor did I have guidance to put me on that path at the time in my high school career when I should have been doing that. And so I had a choice, I had a, two pathways in front of me at that time. I could have gone to work at the port, I had a family member who was going to be able to get me into there, or I could go to Oxnard College. And, um, my mom told me, try a few classes, see what you think, and that's how, that led to the trajectory of my career and what I do today. Had I decided to go to the port, I'm sure I'd still be doing some great stuff over there, have probably had a great career, um, but I am absolutely happy and, um, absolutely ecstatic with the opportunities I've been given because of Oxnard College. And I will always fly their flag, I will always go to bat for them because of how they've served me and how I've seen them serve others, how I know they can serve others like me. Because when I say that my story is not unique, I know that my trajectory and my outcomes don't have to be unique either. And we have systems in place, if we can just find ways to leverage resources to get as many young people in front of those resources as possible. Um, and then, as far as civic engagement, thank you for bringing that up as well to the team who did all this work on this. Uh, this is a huge thing for me, and, I mean, even with adults, uh, there are a number of conversations you can have with adults who may not be aware of how you interact with your local government, or the constitutional rights you have to even go and speak to them, or get, get an audience with them, or whatever the case is. And I've been very privileged in my professional life to be able to empower young people in our community and, and in Ventura County and across the state on, on young people finding out how to advocate for themselves and with their peers in their schools and communities through civic engagement. And even as simple as understanding their ability to make positive change in their school sites through just talking to administrators, or it could be going to the PTA, or even going to the school board, but also in their communities, and going to elected legislative bodies and municipalities and counties. And I, it always occurred to me when I'm teaching young people this, how many adults don't know this stuff? And this is something you can't unlearn. And when you teach a young person this as early as possible, that empowers them for the rest of their lives to engage in this system and also get involved in it, to change it themselves one day for the better. And the biggest thing I tell young people when we talk about their civic engagement, and I tell them, this is your constitutional right to go and speak to your elected officials and your local government, regardless of your age, regardless of your citizenship status, regardless of what language you speak or what zip code you live in, you have every right to go and speak to those elected officials, and they have to listen to you. They at least have to hear you out. And so, um, thank you for saying that, and I know in our high school system, our, even our high school district, that there's certainly, um, a number of opportunities and systems in place to be able to get young people, um, that education as well. Uh, which leads to our OUHSD, um, recommendations. I, I look at it as, um, really looking at how do we enhance the things that the district's doing? How do we see the gaps that they've already recognized, and how do we all work together to help them shore up those gaps? And I would say continued, uh, enrollment or pathways to post-secondary education, continued, uh, and increased workforce readiness. I was mentioning about the academies that the Union High School District has, amazing opportunities for young people. And, um, I mean, when I worked at Pacifica, the culinary program that was there was amazing. And the fact that young people had that opportunity in, at fourteen years old, to start being at that level of culinary, um, experience, and they took it seriously, too. I mean, you see them and they bring their stuff out, and, well, what is that? They tell me all these ingredients I can't even pronounce, I was just like, wow, I just know it tastes great, so. But that and these other academies, health academies, I mean, we are doing great stuff for our young people. How do we do more of it? How do more people, more young people get more opportunities? That's what we need, is diversification of our portfolio for our young people. I'll also give, um, full credit to all of our school districts for their views on whole student wellness and the prioritization of social, emotional wellness for our students, fully recognizing that students who are socially and emotionally well are more primed and ready for academic success and more positive outcomes. And for students like me who had diverse behavioral needs, um, more restorative practices, uh, really teaching young people about actions and effects on others, and how we can work towards being, um, positive in our actions and intentions, and helping others and helping ourselves, and looking at opportunities for supplemental and alternative instructions, so. So I'll just close by saying that, um, this particular study focused on a particular age group, a bracket, was very important, and it's the largest age demographic in the city of Oxnard, if you look at our census data. We owe it to this entire generation to serve them well and give them opportunities to break the cycle that we talked about earlier. They can be the ones that do that. And you can change not only a person's life, but a whole family lineage trajectory just by giving the right person the right opportunities at the right time. And the way I see it, today's adults who are struggling with social challenges in this year, 2024, and all of my twenty-plus-year career, the adults of today, when I see their challenges, that suggests to me that we under-invested in them as youth. We under-invested in them in some way, whether it be through our school system, through our rec offerings, whatever. And what else could we have offered? That doesn't mean we don't serve and support them, we absolutely should. Uh, they deserve high-quality, culturally responsive treatment services for whatever their challenges are. Keeping in mind that the further downstream we go, uh, to address our issues, the more difficult it will be for them, the more treatment episodes they'll probably need to have, and the higher the social and financial costs that will be. Because for every dollar we invest in prevention programming, we save seven to thirteen dollars later on down the line in downstream costs to our healthcare system, our mental health system, our justice system, however you want to, um, slice and dice that. Every dollar we spend in prevention, we are saving it much further down the line. So this is the first of many conversations, and I appreciate, uh, seeing all of the leaders in the room today. I mentioned our elected leaders, our professional leaders, pre-K through twelve, um, post-secondary folks, community-serving nonprofits, the private sector, and community members. We all have a role in this, and I look forward to what's coming next. And, um, I think that, uh, trustee Flores Haro had mentioned, you know, we all have a lane, absolutely we do, but I, when, when that was mentioned, I thought to myself, you know, different lanes, Saviors, C Street, J Street, Ventura Road, those are all different roads, but they all go to the same place, they all go to the beach, right? So we can all certainly have our lanes, but we all want to go to the same great place, and I think we can all get there by working together and, um, being a cohesive unit in all of this, so. All right, those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor, for the extended time.
And, and I think I may, I should have started my dialogue from that side. Thank you, so, thank you so much. Uh, Mayor, pretend you want to share.
I just wanted to make one clarifying comment, and to this day, Oxnard College still does not offer the curriculum and the career path that I wanted to follow. But the other overarching issue is, I went to college in nineteen seventy-two, nineteen seventy-three. Oxnard College didn't even exist until summer of nineteen seventy-five. So I didn't want people to think I was a little bit crazy or, or nuts or whatever. Um, you know, if it had been there, I still wouldn't have been able to go to it because my career path wasn't there, but, uh, you know, back in the seventies, early seventies, our two choices were Moore Park or Ventura, regardless of wherever you live. So I, I just wanted to clarify that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I know, I, I wanted to share something else that, and I, I know I was searching to speak, but I just, I know Dr. Kobian is right there. And Dr. Kobian, we had an opportunity to work with you, I know Alex worked with you, we started the employee pipeline together, we, you had job fairs at Oxnard College. You did a lot for Oxnard College, I just want to commend you for, for that. Put your hands together for Dr. Kobian, please. Thank you so much, you know. And, um, again, Veronica, thank you for your good work. Stand up, Veronica, put a, put your hands together for Veronica, she did a good job. Thank you, thank you for your work. And Alex, any closing thoughts, uh, because I know you're, you're the, the person that brought this together. You, you spoke to us about coming up with a study, and, and the, it, the fruition, this is just unbelievable, just absolutely great. So I just want to thank everybody. I know that we all shared, you know, the, the benefits that we're looking for and potential, we're all going to work together, but Alex, any additional closing comments?
Sure, uh, just a few quick comments. Many things that were said tonight resonate, um, uh, I'm going to highlight a few. This study doesn't present any genuine surprises for anybody, I understand that. There's a lot of macro data. The Ventura County Civic Alliance issues a, um, state of the region every two years, there's macro data there. The State Department of Education issues data every year, uh, macro data there. Uh, the, the, um, the US Census, the State Auditor's Office, there's a lot of data, right? There's a lot that we know, that we think we know, but there's a lot that we don't truly understand. And what I love about this study is it gets under that macro data and gives us nuanced understanding of the, the, the intricacies, and in some cases, the delicacies of each of these challenges that have been, uh, shared with us. So why is this happening here at City Hall? Also mentioned that we don't have anything to do with education, and that is absolutely true. Our lane, as a municipal government, as many of you know and often complain about, are streets, parks, um, trees, public safety, permitting, and so on. I'm proud to say that we're making tons of progress in all of those areas, and we have a long ways to go. That's very cool, and we're going to do it. But as I've said a lot, um, when, when you look at, um, the other macro issues that is often reported, the, the exorbitant cost of housing, right? It's too expensive to live in California. Um, some people say, you know, it's so expensive in Oxnard, all that is also true, but when you look at this kind of information, you understand that, um, we can only push the cost of housing down so much. We must push the wage-earning power of our residents up as fast as we can. Because even, even if I could build one thousand affordable housing units in Oxnard tomorrow, most of our families still could not afford those units. There was mention about, um, having a packed room tonight, you know, one of the last times we had a packed room in these council chambers was when we had the community here demanding rent control, right? So all of these things, somehow, all roads of civic, um, um, uh, displeasure or, or civic frustration ends here, ends at City Hall. So it's important to me that we have to, um, uh, somehow tiptoe out of our lane and figure out solutions for each of these barriers. And while we do the work of municipal government, um, one, one of the other macro pieces of data you can find in the state of the region is the number, the sheer number of Oxnard residents, and this came up a lot from the students, uh, with regard to food insecurity. So in the last full, full twelve months that I saw measured by, um, Food Share, our, basically our county food bank, they served in a twelve-month period, one hundred and forty-five thousand unduplicated Oxnard residents. Now, we have just over two hundred thousand residents here. So as a municipal government and as your city manager, it's obvious to me, we'll fix the roads, but all we are doing is making your drive to Food Share a little bit smoother. And that's not good enough for this community. And while the local government can marginally in, improve the quality of life with the things we do, like parks and, and, uh, other, um, libraries, of course, we can't by ourselves improve the standard of living. So all the other civic institutions in this community need to step up, including us. And, and I want to take a quick moment to ask, um, the actual city staff that have the most engagement with our young people, which is our recreation staff, so they will be, whatever the city ends up contributing to this broader effort, it will be these folks. So can you all please stand up? I don't know how many of you are here, can you just please stand up? Because these are the folks that work with Oxnard youth.
Terrill Harrison, thank you, Terrill.
And yes, Mr. Terrill Harrison, their fearless leader who actually just, um, led a huge international boxing, amateur boxing tournament here in Oxnard. So, um, the, so this explains why we're, why we spent the, the incredibly worthwhile money for this study. Part of what I'm going to do over the next year is seek out major foundation investment into our community. There are large foundations across this nation, uh, some you've heard of because they've been around forever, and some we've never heard of, um, but we'll get to them. But there are some foundations that make large, large investments, multi-year investments into communities just like Oxnard with our kinds of demographics. Uh, we just need to ask them. With this study, I can ask them with a straight face, so that's what, uh, we're going to work on. And then, as everyone else has said, we will have to find ways to work together, uh, and we will, thank you.
By the way, before we, before we adjourn, I know we want to thank our, our city attorney, Mr. Fisher, right, sitting next to the city manager, Ashley Golden in the back, you know, our assistant, uh, city manager, and our police chief in the back guarding the whole stadium here, can you believe that? But thank you anyway, and thank you to all the department heads that are here, and, and as mentioned earlier, Terrill Harrison did a really good job, he had international boxing, we had boxing from people throughout the, the world here, boxing just, what was, eight days, Terrill? How many, how many, how, five days? How many boxers did we have?
Five days, uh, we had seven hundred and ninety-five.
Can you imagine, seven hundred and ninety-five boxers from throughout the world here in Oxnard? Thank you so much, and put your hand together for Terrill, and we'll adjourn from there. So, thank you, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.